Security theater, right? Just like going through the air.
I cheated though, I think I started in twenty seven.
The last five days before my wife said, nope, you're done.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything though, physically.
You shouldn't go early.
Didn't she, our kind of least apartment do it last year?
I don't remember.
She don't want no party or anything on her adventure.
You know, the thing is that you spend just as much.
That's it?
Up and down.
You know, that'd be shady.
It's probably just your face up there.
No. Been married thirty seven years and it's been divorced. No surprise birthday party, nice surprise. I don't love it.
Well, this is about the extent of my beard growing ability.
Oh, really?
You can't stop other people.
No. Yeah.
Couldn't even encourage them.
Yes, we could.
That's not your fault.
No, she. Superintendent had embarrassed her complication making her stand. Cause she had most, she had all the years, most years in the business. It's not the oldest, but yeah, most years.
Is, is she retiring next year?
Into this.
This year, oh, that's cool, good. That's nice.
Yeah. I'd like to another. This is my tracker. Insurance sucks off the grass.
Yeah, you have that gap.
Like there'd be like a big current dust around.
Oh, your allergy problem.
Hers is only, it only touches.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Where did I go behind her?
There you go. Actually, I used to have to wear one when I was weed whacking. Sometimes I do in the spring.
Insurance gets rid from that gap.
Every day.
Fifty nine and a half to sixty five, it's, it's very odd.
It's funny, I was in an office of a few scientists today.
Buckwheat.
Yeah, Buckwheat. Yeah, I was there.
People always promise to have some sort of gap.
Two weeks ago.
In those ages and they've never, never came to fruition.
Oh, you don't even ask anyone, my gosh, this is great. So I took it off and I came back in the day.
I remember when I first started in, in the business.
Quickly things changed.
Dimensional.
Comet or RFP.
That was gonna be the new thing in two thousand two. They were gonna release this.
Yeah.
Between fifty nine and sixty five.
They had an adult, so it's got, I saw it.
Help.
He had it.
It's all take early retirement for all these.
And it was, man, I was super sure. It was just his labor booth, he said, I was, I don't know, that kid. I don't know how they do it. It's like, you know, I was starting with.
A lot of them.
Childs.
And you can see on your parents still.
Adult.
Twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And then they're not, they're not getting insurance.
We submitted an application.
No, so many people are not getting insurance.
It's great.
Okay.
I was at my financial planner. Actually, there are, so I have two other companies. He said what? Sixty percent. Freshwater, J and J, or does it have RSU licenses as well?
I believe that.
I'm seeing that. I can, I can. We held one of the recent. To a Zion longer. Chartered cable. Zombari. People on the other side. I don't mind. Guys.
Eleven minutes.
Yeah. Expenses. You know, kind of what she would be making, you can move the money, taxes.
How are you doing?
Hello, good evening.
Air without.
Yeah.
Hey.
Nope.
You're fine.
I think every time I see you, you're getting around better.
Yes, sir.
Although I guess that's probably the name of the game. Hope, right?
That's, that's the whole ultimate goal. Get there.
Forty years ago, wasn't it forty two years ago?
How's everybody?
Absolutely wonderful.
Absolutely wonderful.
I heard your wedding got canceled today.
Yes.
Are we getting married?
No. My times are, I'm good. Unfortunately, the young couple just since something came up and they have to work some things out, so.
Oh.
Unfortunately, no marriage today.
How many marriages? How many marriages have you done as mayor?
Oh, I bet you half a dozen.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's neat.
I think so, about that. Mm hmm. There are, each one's unique.
I bet.
Yeah. Sometimes the groom is just. Perspirate.
And sometimes there are shotguns involved.
And the nervousness there and other, they're, they're so calm and.
Don't think we've had that.
You know. It's, it's just, you know, it's just like, okay, it's a great day and, and then some of the family, I mean, some have large family gatherings up there.
Mm hmm.
When we put it on.
And you do them all at City Hall or other places?
At City Hall and I think what I've done too on the portico. One more outside in the fresh air on that side of the portico.
Yeah.
It was kind of neat.
You know, all the husband. Well, my fifteenth anniversary is next, so maybe Katie and I will stop by and, you know, they'll get me. We'll do the vows on the portico.
There you go.
You know, they could have just as easily built on someone.
Do you, are you gonna write your own ceremony or do you want the one that I perform?
I don't know, this idea just came in thirty seconds, I guess.
Be careful.
Romantic, I mean, she would really like it. Be careful what you ask for, Jamie. You can pull that off.
Hey, I promised you didn't tonight.
Fuck, we gotta little stop to make first.
How about the slam of a city hall?
There you go, right?
I think I'm having hallucinations here. Young girl.
How are you doing? Good, how are you?
Good to see you. Wait till I see Patrick.
It's good to see you.
Thanks.
So good.
Hi, wow. Everyone's here.
Again, above. So, so that.
Is it all of it? No, I'm having less chemo at December second.
Well, it's the last one.
Yeah, it's December second.
Maybe.
Let's do this, let's do your hair coming back. Let's, I'm like, all about it. Faster, feel better.
Yeah.
Your episodic.
Am I episodic?
Yeah.
Weird. Like, who went up higher?
Yeah, well, actually, it's about the same. It's been raised, somebody was hitting my head.
Is that true? Yeah. Somebody was hitting their knee. And asked you to raise your knee. He wasn't the only one who was hitting it. Well, I was hitting my knees too, but I still liked being higher.
Yes, I did.
We'll see if that can be.
Should I get on?
Although, the same thing, it's phone work. Let's see how, how.
Yeah.
Well, we'll take, we get these like cattle all the time, like office or something. Take a couple of those.
They're down on thirty east.
Yeah.
It's like a construction.
Yeah.
Pretty good. Yeah.
Health.
Yeah.
It's not neutral for us.
How are you getting?
Oh, yes.
She was actually a mentor for, she gets high.
Yeah, those are good.
That's fun. Roman. And Barry Raskin is the past.
Coys for us.
Three years.
Nice. Are you?
Yeah.
Where are you at the German?
Today's my role, which I. I used to start.
But that was wrong.
Every, every leader to Maggiore, everyone else was up there. Very, very old. Now, I, I mean, either not, or, or more. It's very, like, to my own. So I, I live, I'm like eighty seven.
I think they come to you through three pieces.
Which is actually funny, so we just talked about, you know, the Tesla. So we're in actual sense, it's.
Such a.
They actually. They called.
Sure.
Which was.
Chuck.
How are you, Brandon?
Pretty good. Hi, boss.
Mr. Peters.
Senator Mayor.
I'm not dancing yet.
Not dancing yet?
I hit around.
There you go.
Thank you.
So what's the range on it? So it's about two hundred and thirty miles. Oh, so that might work, and he's been talking about, then I go over there. I said, all right. So I guess it's about two hundred and thirty miles, he says, no, no. It's more like one hundred and thirty, one hundred and seventy in actual weeks. He says, where do you live in San Ohio? Strike one, says, do you ever drive more than two hundred miles? Yeah, strike two, he says, I think I'll get you this car. Cause you're gonna be ready.
With Tesla, yeah, two twelve.
Yeah, and I think Tesla's further ahead than, than other companies.
I mean, anything else that you're running, it's.
And then I would be curious what your experience driving at. You know, if you ever get into it. Yep. Well, it's not so much that, I'm thinking, considering the cold goes to matter.
It's good.
I'll speak to my company page, Ford Edge, we have my eleven mile.
Have we received any monies?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we will be. We have.
Right. Oh, yeah.
It takes a year. Go in fact, we pay.
I.
Seriously?
Well, I was wondering about. I thought that money was very important. Thought that's where that was.
Well, that's why I replaced the money that he and she was taking out. The general subsidized their office.
One time.
And then we take it in three out of the general fund to keep going.
A sound eliminate. When you've got a sound here. Sounds, so it was a point, which is what she would try to eliminate.
Well, it was intended to be that. It wasn't intended to be more.
Tesla, but that's.
Well, but they.
So, and we must say that as a question, I know it's always.
But, yeah, I, I saw him.
Is that?
I wanna know where the.
First.
Yeah.
Tesla. Part time people.
Talk to me after.
Not just here, but.
No planning.
Seriously, if you get hired.
Two firemen, one inspector.
Christina. Hello, John. Hello, how are you? Like it's good forever. God, how you doing?
I know how that. Getting better. That's what I think. Don't say. I don't.
What's the, uh, what's the study that you saw with your fire? I don't know. So we all know how long that's gonna be. You said, I would say, you said.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll take them a couple of months to get all the data together that they'll study some of the fires. And then naturally, we got there from how.
I like the size of the one. So these, all in all.
Or else.
I don't know. What's gonna happen? It's gonna be.
We know that.
That it's open. Yeah.
It's gonna be. We said Saturday, it's gonna be. We said this, this is gonna be.
It's gonna be one next. Cause you always wonder why.
One side will say.
And I was just like, so. You know, I mean, like.
Talking.
And I thought that you like.
There you go. I've been saying. Some, you know, accidents or.
But, um, I didn't. Cause I was so like, are you kidding me right now? And it was in this monkey toe. I was like, oh my gosh.
And everybody's.
Okay, so what?
Sure.
Is it a hard day at home? Okay.
It is.
Yes. Okay, so.
So they have to go, they have to go.
Is that better?
And then what? Oh, I just. If they're needing to ride. Even more.
Okay. Who, occupant? Oh, nice. Is he a resident? But why would they? I would like to maybe help them. Or just buy like a little tie.
Like, like this house.
Oh, yes. He says I'd have to do the build up.
My company's for it.
Oh, so you tell him what you want and then he has to build it?
Yeah.
That, that's nice.
If that's what starts, probably some of it. And then about thirty seconds. Well, Supreme Leader, about fifteen seconds.
Sorry, I'm trying to think of anything else. We're gonna try with everything else.
Yeah.
Good.
Now, call to order the committee of the whole meeting for November seventh, twenty twenty two, the time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the rule?
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Schrein?
Here.
Member McLeesner?
Here.
Member Wiret?
Here.
Member Warrick?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, thank you, Ben. Uh, community and economic development, Daryl.
Okay, very good. First item is, uh, we are in the process of rewriting our sign ordinance and we need to repeal uh, the existing ordinance and replace it with eleven fifty one, with a new eleven fifty one. It's been to the, uh, commission. Uh, we need to do two things tonight. Uh, the first is, uh, we need to set a public hearing. And the clerk has recommended that we do this for six forty five on December twelfth. So if there aren't any questions or reservations, uh, I'll take a mo, I'll make a motion that we set that hearing for the twelfth at six forty five.
Second.
We need a motion first.
He, he made.
Make a motion?
I just did.
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers?
Okay, uh, the other item that we want to do is we want to look at, uh, the planning commission made five, five suggestions for the amendments and, and Patrick and I thought that the most expeditious way to do these, Ben, I think you've got the red line copy, is on the screen in front of you. Uh, why don't we just move through those, uh, with, uh, let Patrick walk through them. Uh, the first being on the planning commission edits is section eleven fifty one oh three, scope of requirements. They've added a final or added one additional numeral in one B. Patrick, you wanna go ahead? Yeah, so I would like to just say as background that, uh, this is a project that I've been long trying to get off the ground, I mean, working on this since I got here and, uh, you know, realized that, um, didn't really have the, the people in force to really to understand it, of what changes needed to be made, not just from the standpoint of the nature of business today and, and, you know, the aesthetic standards or whatever that we have, but, you know, there was a Supreme Court case that kind of stood, you know, municipal sign ordinances on their head. And I didn't have the legal, um, firepower, if you will, to get into the code and then be able to make the modifications until we switched and went to affirm. And so with that, for the last eighteen months, uh, we had the, the study done in relations to the Supreme Court decision on what to make changes, but then we thought while we're doing that, let's go through top to bottom review and make any adjustments that we feel need to be, you know, looked at now. And some of it is, is we'll get into is in, in regards to, uh, you know, the enforcement, uh, piece of it and how to do all this. And just none of this was ever really done since the original, you know, I think the last rewrite in two thousand and three or slightly before then, so. It's a comprehensive look, you should read through all of it. Uh, the only thing that you're seeing and read tonight are recommendations from the planning commission. So in regards to that, the first one that they wanted to add that administration is opposed to is directional or instructional signs less than three feet tall. What they want is they want an exemption that directional or instructional signs less than three feet tall don't count towards the total signed package that you're allowed on a property, particularly a commercial property. They want directional or instructional signs less than three feet tall to be exempted. We're opposed to that because we see where you can use a directional or instructional sign to say like, um, it's less than three feet tall, they give no restriction on length, which you can say, uh, this is not a real life example, it's just something that's come to my head, but you could say, uh, Debold, with an arrow this way, the world's greatest ATM maker. And then another sign with an arrow that says, you know, keep going, Debold, the world's greatest, um, manufacturer of restaurant, uh, quick service order kiosks. You know, you just, you see that being, um, use the right word here, but, you know, the intent being converted to use for some other purpose when the idea was just to say, you know, trucks this way.
Hmm.
I see it that granting this exemption creates another thing. It shouldn't just, we're not saying that you can't have a directional or instructional sign, it just needs to be within the confines of this ordinance that says, this is the total package. You get so much potential on your building, so much potential at the pole sign or monument sign or, and that this can't be exempted from it, it needs to be part of it. So if, you know, without any, uh, instructions, restrictions as to quantity, length, I think that that should not be something that's just, uh, put in here. And given the nature of the business in North Canton, I'm not sure that there's really, um, a need for, you know, unencumbered, unrestricted amount of signs that relate to direction. I think, Patrick, the point you make is to summarize at first that intent, as, as this was being rewritten is, is to kind of reduce, if you will, sign pollution. Yes.
Mm hmm.
It's really what, and standardize our signage up through, through the community. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Patrick on this? I don't think we need a motion or anything, we're not amending it, but, uh, is there anyone who supports this? Okay, so we'll move on then. Uh, the next, uh, set of, uh, suggestions came in section eleven fifty one oh five and these deal with monument signs and whether they're conditional or not, not permitted uses and a, an amendment down, uh, in section D, schedule D, uh, the insertion of, uh, some language regarding maximum area. So Patrick, do you wanna pick up? All right, so at the top of your screen there, just in, in the red, you know, kind of what we're looking at is where these, um, electronic message content signs is what we're talking about. Uh, you can see down there where it said EMC is permitted, it was being permitted in the column in which those uh, districts along the Main Street corridor were allowed. So they, it was permitted in Main Street, North Gateway, Main Street North, Main Street South, Main Street South Gateway. Planning commission is asking that it be made conditional rather than permitted in those. And then strike Main Street North, Main Street Center and only allow it conditionally in the two gateways. These are electronic message content signs. So like you see at Zion Church, Darcy Freel's place. Community Christian Church. There are a number of places that have that and it's just a matter of, you know, what do you think the directional, uh, flow is in the marketplace towards that versus traditional signs? What do you want? Um, the planning commission is saying that they want it conditional, uh, in the two gateways and not permitted anywhere else. So, uh, we, I think that pretty much, and then down in the, at the far column, the GBA, GBB, OB, so this would be stuff not on Main Street, which is the rest of the city, uh, conditional. And that's, you know, entirely up to the council and the mayor, what you guys want. I'm, uh, looking at it from what I see when I'm out there, you know, on the economic development front, the kind of stuff that people want. Uh, that's the kind of stuff that, that people want, uh, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you need to have it in your community if you don't want it. So I know that over the years, it has been a source of, of dialogue on both sides, whether we should have it or whether we shouldn't have it, so. Whatever the, uh, the administration doesn't have a position on that, it's changed. Let me, let me ask you this question, Patrick. For the people who have the digital signs now, have we had any problems and or complaints regarding the use? For example, churches, you know, they, they can very quickly and conveniently announce special events. They can quickly and conveniently announce Sunday sermons, for example, et cetera. So this is a an excellent way to provide really sort of very contemporary messaging. You know, I think there at one time, there was even talk about the city having its own message board somewhere for that purpose. So, uh, have we had problems? That's my question. Uh, no, um, there are still restrictions in it, even if you did permit them, if you could see the sign face, I think it would only be twenty five percent of the face of the sign is the electronic part. And then, you know, there's other illumination, uh, requirements elsewhere, so, um, we try to address that, that, you know, we're not interested in, you know, this monster sized sign that is gonna blaze out.
Now, what would be, let's say the church down here, Mission View, I don't believe they have anything, so they could still possibly get something. Correct?
Yes, it, uh, under Parks and Institution presently, that is conditional and it would be, they did not recommend the change to that.
Or the other churches on the other side of Maple, I think one has one right now.
The Baptist church.
Yeah, I think the Baptist church has one right now.
The Baptist.
There you go. I mean, I think as long as they're, we're still, you know, policing the size of the signs. Yes. You know, so you're not gonna have something like you see on the side of the highway at the car dealerships. Um, I, I mean, I for one am okay with them.
Yeah. Here is, here is. Let's go, let's go back to Patrick's point just for a second. Um, we are in the process of land banking properties outside of the two terminal gateways. We are aggregating properties for larger projects. We may need a digital sign for that and the question is, do you really wanna make that, even though it is a small thing, a potential impediment for a project?
Agreed.
Question. I think it's, just depends on your comfort zone. The other thing is this, as I've often said, becomes a problem, you can always come back and pick up the edits. We do a lot of that. Of course, we, we should.
But even like for future annexation and stuff of that nature, the areas that we might have someday, well.
That's a good point. It's a, it's an excellent point.
You know, that would be another.
All right, so I guess the question is, do we want to set, set the planning commission's recommendations aside? Is there anyone who wants to incorporate that?
I think we set it aside on this.
Yep. Is that the consensus?
I, I agree.
Okay. Patrick, let's move on then. Okay. Uh, freestanding signs, section eleven fifty one oh seven.
He's getting wall sign.
Pardon?
He's getting small sign.
Oh, small signs, wall signs, I'm sorry. You're right. D. Okay, so, um, we spent a lot of time. Okay, so we spent a lot of time in our group going through this and trying to get, you know, an understanding by district, again, to try to incorporate that it's not a one-size-fits-all, that there are different buildings, different areas, and they sit back from the street or they don't sit back from the street, trying to get something that kind of works. The, the maximum area of any single sign, they increased it to 500 feet, square feet, for any single sign. We had it at 200. Is that correct then?
No, they, this is, this restriction is entirely due to them, so we didn't have a maximum.
We didn't have anything, and they wanted to impose the maximum. Got it. So that's probably worth putting in, I think that's a good add.
It's a little small, because if you take a look at a sign on the square.
I think it's worth seeing it big. Well, I'm thinking if you go either way, if you can go 25 by 25.
Yeah, you know, you go 25 by 25, or 30, you know, being in the sign making business, you know, we've gone to those overwhelmed, but we're seeing more and more bigger signs out there now.
I mean. Like John, can you give me an example of one, I would just, like off the top of your head, like, just so I can think of how big it really.
That's, Employers Health, Fulton Road.
Yeah.
You've seen that one.
Yeah.
And now I'm replaced, we're doing that, and then they have some around the building.
So they want it bigger?
They want it bigger, out front, bigger.
Okay.
Because now you've got Meyer Store, you've got all those stores going down.
So would you say right now, it's, it's a 500 square feet?
Oh, it's big.
Oh, it's bigger than that even? Okay.
Even like you take a look at the library, about how big are your signs out there? You guys ever do anything or want to do something? Sure you want a huge sign, a big sign? Do you want a big sign?
Square feet, I mean.
Well, 500 square feet is huge, it's big.
The 500 square feet limitation is on any single sign, so let's say you had a small, narrow frontage, like the Chamber building.
Right.
Their, 5% of their facade is not going to get anywhere close to 500 square feet.
Not at all. And that's a narrow.
Look at the maximum total sign area, because that's more restricted, they just don't want to exceed the 500 square.
Well, is it going to be a difference from being on the road to being on the building?
These are wall signs.
These are wall signs, okay. So that would be.
So 5% of the facade is the, is the total sign area square foot limitation, so 5% of the Debo building, of the IRG building, whatever it is, that facade that faces Main Street, 5% of that could exceed 500 square feet, so that's why they put in the limitation, 500 square feet for one particular sign. And then you can see when you get to like, Main Street North and South, it switches to a different, you know, two square feet per linear foot of the sign. The buildings are kind of changing.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so we have three questions in this section. The first is, the administration is comfortable with the maximum area of any single sign not to exceed 500 square feet? Are we in agreement that that's a suitable amendment?
I'm just trying to think of an example where 500 feet in the city wouldn't be big enough.
I wonder how big that sign is for the Hitting Academy is?
That's, that's a large sign.
Yeah, what academy?
The batting academy.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't exceed 500.
It's like, I can't imagine on a sign.
I mean, I'm scared that it's.
Some square feet's a pretty good size.
I'm just thinking that 500 square feet might be too much, but.
25 feet, that's two and a half stories.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah.
So it was three times a parking lot space.
There you go.
If you're good at all.
Okay.
Everybody go to the parking lot and look.
So are we comfortable with 500 feet at this point?
It's big.
It's big.
It's big, do we want to take it down? Always take it up later.
Yeah.
Well, they can always go for berries, okay.
True.
Well, and it's relative to the size of the building, right?
That's 5%,
Yeah.
So it's 500 feet or?
Or no more than 500 square feet. It's pretty good size.
Yeah.
But, I can, I can look at it. Let's move up, are we comfortable with 500? So we'll move on. Okay, let's go up, it said, one of the other recommendations was, if you look in the column, it says maximum total sign area, so it's a grammatical amendment that they proposed. Administration, are you comfortable with that?
I put that in to clarify the difference between the added row and the row that was previously, so that the total word goes with the 500 square feet.
Okay. Is that consistent with the minutes from the planning commission, however?
I believe so.
Take a look at the, take a look at the five recommendations. I believe that that was, was that added.
What I'm saying is I added the word total to clarify the difference between that row and the row below it.
Okay, but you have added it.
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the 500.
And I take it you have added single for clarification as well? All right, I'm going to take your word for that. But we will need to authorize the use of total and single as well. Are there any questions or comments about that use? Okay, so this particular section, we will amend the legislation to include those changes. Now, we're going to get on to section 115107, freestanding signs. Patrick? Maximum sign face, EMC, or EMC's permitted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is again, this, planning commission opted to not have the freestanding EMC sign in the Main Street North Gateway and South Gateway, or in the GBA, GBB, OB, to be permitted, they want it to be conditional.
So let me ask you this question. Planning Commission, I've got an individual who is going to spend a considerable sum of money on a car wash in the North Gateway, correct? What if he wants to run a special on a certain day? Or he's going to support the Hoover High School cross-country team and donate a percentage? He's got to have conditional use, or we're just going to allow him to do it, so he can change his business model on a day-to-day basis?
Well, I think it gets back to what is the planning commission doing with the recommendation, right? So they're going to, you know, does it meet all the other code requirements? That's not something that they determine or can waive, that's going to be built by the, the building and permitting and zoning departments, that it complies with everything else. You know, the planning commission is, you know, looking to maybe be the aesthetic guardian here. It almost borders on like an architectural review board, in my opinion.
I don't think we're there yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. I'm not sure I want to start down that path at this point. Thoughts, everyone?
I think we stick with the way it was with this, rather than following the recommendation.
I think if you look at what's already in the North Gateway and the South Gateway, making it conditional gives them unfair advantages.
You're right, okay. Fair enough. All right, any other, any other questions or comments? See none, I guess we'll let the, the original, original language prevail. So, just to recap, and I think that is it. One more, I'm sorry. Temporary signs.
This one will be the one that we talk about the most.
Yeah, this is the one. Planning Commission has recommended that temporary signs shall be displayed for a duration not to exceed 45 days. It's found in section 115112.
What was it before?
It's new, this is a new.
Completely new?
Totally new.
So these would be political signs, housing signs, remodeling?
There are certain signs that if you read at the beginning of the ordinance that are exempted from these kind of temporary regulations, so, like an ideological sign. Vote for me. This used to be something that was in the code, where we redid it, we took it out, planning is trying to put it back in. And it comes down to really an enforcement need. Okay, so I want you to think about this, why this isn't ever going to work. So somebody puts out a temporary sign that's not exempted, you know, Realtor sign would be exempted, you are listed, somebody puts out a temporary sign that's not exempted, I don't know when it went out, how do I know what day it was put up unless, you know, I know the day I drive by it and I see it, I know it from that day, but I don't know how long it was up before that. So let's say I give them 45 days from that time, I got to, I got to calendar this to go back, to follow up on every single sign that's going to be out there that would fall under this, this limitation. There's just no way to administer that, not without an army of people. And then what happens when they don't take it down after 45 days? Am I sending them a notice, hey, by the way, your 45th day's come up, you know, make sure that's down? And then if it isn't down, then they, I go up the next day and do what? Do they take it down? Do I take it down? Let's say I take it down, okay? Then the next day, they put another one up, another sign, it's a different sign, 45 days from that sign, I mean, it's just, it just doesn't make practical sense. And this is where, you know, I think that that's all we did back in the day before I got here, they went for the low hanging fruit, drove around, found signs, catalogued them, did whatever, and that's all we spent time doing, was popping signs out and throwing in the trunk of the car, bringing them down to the park garage, notifying people that their signs were down here, they could come pick them up, and blah, 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 and it goes on and on. Where we were missing, you know, oh, the spouting tank came up in this place, this yard here isn't being kept up. So I just don't think that it, that it kind of works. I don't know that there's an ideal solution, honestly, we've looked at, you know, codes in other, other cities, and I don't think anybody has a, a lock on what is the, the right way, everybody has to kind of deal with it. But putting that in there when I'm not going to be able to enforce it because we don't have the people, nor would we hire the people to do this, because I don't think that we can effectively administer it in a non-discriminatory way. I don't know when that first one went up, so the first sign goes up at Charlie's, they're running a special, and I notice it, you know, turns out a week after it's gone up, and then Burger King puts one up, and I notice it the first day because I caught it from when I was up looking at Charlie's, and, you know, now I got two calendars running, and it just, it doesn't make sense. What we wanted to do with the temporary signs is create a situation where it's easily recognized that it's not, that it's not really compliant, so we really spent the time on where the signs are located. So in an area where there are sidewalks, we're saying that it needs to, the signs need to be on the interior of their, the sidewalk, in their yards, not in the devil's strip. So if we're driving around, as our code enforcement coordinators will do after this, if this were to go into effect at some point in the future here, and they see a sign that's in the devil's strip, the language in here is that we have the ability to remove that sign.
And dispose of it.
And dispose of it if we want to.
Not hold it.
Then just get rid of it, if we have that ability. But, you know, maybe it's a, you know, this is the stuff that we got into is really fascinating, but let's say you're driving down Willow Way Street, Southeast, and somebody puts a sign in the devil's strip that they, they're missing their dog, lost dog, or cat. Were we going to be the people to drive around and snatch that sign and throw it in the trunk? No, right? So we're going to say, you know, look, this sign is supposed to be here, you know, we'll put the sign there, let you know that, that isn't the way it's supposed to be. So, you know, but as we, as we go through that, I think everybody kind of gets a, gets a freebie notice that, hey, this isn't supposed to be in the devil's strip, it's supposed to be on the inside. Now, in an area where there are no sidewalks, we've placed in here that it needs to be eight feet from the roadway. So generally, when you take in the devil's strip and the width of the sidewalk, it turns out to be about that anyway. But in some areas where this, where the, if we went down Wise Northeast, you've got a 12-inch, you know, devil's strip, 29-inch sidewalk, and then in banquet, right? So, you know, to just uniformly say it's eight feet everywhere, that isn't practical, so that's why we opted for the sidewalk phase. It's on the inside of the sidewalk, you can put it on your little hillside, you know, that'll work, regardless of what the, what the sign is, so.
Roughly, how many signs do we have like this, can tell, would you say?
How many signs are out there?
Yeah.
You know, a lot, so you go to certain intersections and they're, they're flooded with.
They don't take them down.
Number of signs on the corner, we've got that issue. Depending, you know, in the summer, you get all the garage sale signs, and one of the other provisions in here is that no posting signs on any public or private utility poles, so if you want to, you want to clean that whole thing up.
So why have it if we can't enforce it?
Right, I think that's what it comes down to. I mean, I kind of agree with what their, the direction they're going, that they agree that the signs are of light, but if we can't enforce it, why have it?
And then, you know, I've talked with a couple of you, and I think there's a provision in here that we would, you know, you guys may want to air that out here, but I'm just trying to find a way. So we put in there that you're limited to one temporary sign for every 200 linear feet that you have. Most lots don't have 200 linear feet, so we're talking about one sign. And that's totally up to you, what we all decide on that. The idea was to engage in some type of dialogue to get you to understand the dilemma that we face in trying to enforce what we pass, and I recognize that, you know, one is not one that would work, but, you know, we don't want to, you know, you don't want to say unlimited, so, you know, striking a balance here, I throw that out there.
Let me ask you this, Patrick. A political sign is a temporary sign, is it not?
A political sign is a temporary sign, but it's an ideological sign, and it's exempted. So this is, with the things that were exempted, we were trying to gear it towards more things that would be commercially out there, but taking some of those commercial ones off, so like Realtor signs. You know, when the house sells, they generally pull the signs anyway, so they're not out there permanently.
Like a garage sale sign.
A garage sale.
Don't we have rules for garage sales right now? I thought we, you could only have so many a year.
Again, another thing that I don't want to be in the business of pulling permits for garage sales, devoting resources to when the garage sale is, now the garage sale's over, did you take down the signs, and go on and on and on, and we could, you could wrap up a whole, you could wrap up a whole department in this.
I think that, I think the, is there anyone who would like to include this provision, recommendation from a planning commission?
Forty-five day?
Pardon?
Forty-five day one?
Forty-five day one?
Yeah. Is there anyone who supports that?
Does that mean that the temporary signs that are exempt can be up indefinitely? Is that something that we want?
I think some of it aligns with court, is it not?
Right, it's that Supreme Court case out of Arizona, right?
Can't regulate content. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna say, we want them down after ninety days, it gets back to whatever day you pick, is you don't have an administrative arm to go after that. And you keep track of it.
So an election sign can go up and stay up?
Yeah.
Two years until the next election?
That was specifically, Tempe versus Reed was about that. I want the right to say who I want to vote for at any time.
Three-day speech comes into play.
Doesn't it?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so I assume we're gonna, we'll let that, let that recommendation pass this time. Just to recap, section eleven fifty-one oh three, the answer was no on that recommendation with planning commission. On section eleven fifty-one oh five, the answer was, was no. On eleven fifty-one oh six, building wall signs, we agreed yes to those changes. Eleven fifty-one oh seven, freestanding signs, the answer was no. And finally, then, on temporary signs, we've decided to pass on the recommendation regarding the duration.
How does council feel about the two hundred linear feet issue on the temporary signs? That's pretty much either maybe a corner lot or a commercial lot. Everything else is limited to one side.
But what would you need?
I mean, the front of my yard's ninety-eight feet.
But what would you need two signs for? Well, to Dave's point, let's assume you were on a corner, all right? And you, Patrick, I'm gonna look for you for guidance here, but what if you needed two for sale signs?
What if you needed what?
Two for sale signs, one on each street.
Realtor signs are exempted.
Where's this exempt sign list?
Under eleven fifty-one oh three scope of requirements?
Yeah.
What was the number?
Eleven fifty-one point oh three scope of requirements.
I'm glad Graves still turns up.
So what would be another example of why we would need more than one sign for two hundred?
So, I belong to a certain church. I let the church put a sign in my yard that there's fish fry. And then somebody else comes along and wants to put a sign in for something else. Maybe I'm having a garage sale, maybe there's a lost kidney. Maybe there's another event, the J.C. Festival is around the same time as St. Romulus Church Festival. They want both signs in their yard. Limiting it to one would force them to choose. So I just, again, I wasn't strongly advocating that I want a dialogue as to what you're looking for.
Those, everything that you just mentioned, besides the missing cat, is a nonprofit charitable exempted sign, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a really...
The idea.
Right, but like, true, what would there be that's not?
It's tough to think of an example where there's not an exemption.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've answered everything except this question about two hundred feet. Let's do this. Put it in my cheat sheet. We've set the date for the public hearing. I'm gonna ask for a motion in a moment, just to move this to the council agenda. And then to postpone further consideration. We can amend this on the fly. We'll give three readings. You've got plenty of time to think this thing through. If you wanna adjust it, that two hundred feet, then if you would make a note to remind the elder chairman of the committee that this is something that we want, might wanna reconsider when we, after our public hearing, and we begin to move our first vote. How does that sound?
I don't think it sounds good, 'cause maybe members of the public would say that two hundred...
Yeah, let's just see, let's just see where we are in a second, okay? All right, anything else on this, on the sign matter? Dave?
I'm good. I'm good.
Christina, we'll go ahead and head it back, you good? Okay, perfect. All right, I'm gonna move, and I'll look for a second, that we move ordinance sixty-eight twenty-two to the council agenda. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and I'm also gonna make a motion, and I'll look for a second, that we postpone further consideration of this ordinance until after the public hearing on December fifteenth. December twelfth, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Pardon? Are you opposed? This is the Politburo, nobody's ever opposed. All right, item three B, ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-two, ordinance amending eleven thirty-six, Main Street Districts Regulations of the Codified Orders to repeal. Eleven thirty-six seventeen signage in its entirety. I think we've kinda been through this, reason to beat a dead horse. I'm gonna make a motion.
Question?
Yes.
Do we want to repeal it before we put the other one in place? Or do it, repeal it at the same time, and then the other one in place?
Well...
So we don't wanna put this on the agenda?
No, it's not.
We're gonna have a public hearing consideration.
This also requires a public hearing.
We're gonna have a public hearing too. So the answer to your question is, they should go in tandem.
Okay.
Clerk will have us synchronized. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, and I'll look for a second, but we set the public hearing for this on December twelfth.
Second.
And that is the appeal again, that's sixty-nine twenty dash twenty-two. It's unseconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I move that we place ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-two on the council agenda, is there a second?
Is that moved?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll make a motion that we postpone further consideration of ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-two until after the public hearing of December twelfth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pretty good. And one more item. We need to make a technical correction to our contact contractor regulations. This is chapter thirteen ten, if you will note in your packet, the correct, this is a technical correction. The language is presented, this is on page twenty-four of your packet. You'll notice that the proposed language work without permission and registration. That language is there, and the numbering is correct. Does that suffice the administration? Are there any questions or comments about that? Again, tech...
So, is there a way that we can update the website to include a link that takes you directly to those registered contractors? Because right now, it only goes to contractors to register, and then the list is clear at the bottom of that.
Any idea?
We have a second one, an idea.
There used to be a EDF list.
So if you go to registration, and you go all the way to the bottom, you see the list. And you on that left-hand column get a quick link to that, list of registered contractors. I mean, it's a safety thing for residents to know that they're hiring a contractor that's registered with the city. Before the contractor penalized, doubled the rates to register, and then they just walk and take half the resident's money and never come back.
Are you just saying, putting that section in a more visible location?
We'll link, link in the column to the left, so the phone...
Yeah, I think we're saying this in the black, the...
The black column.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Put it up there, right there.
You got contractor registration and renewal, we need to have a registered contractor list. And it just takes them right there.
Good idea.
Don't have to hunt for it.
Individual list, yeah.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
I'll have to figure out how to do it.
Now that we've been duly sidetracked...
That's a whole different request today.
We good?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you, great suggestion. I need a motion, I'll make the motion, if there are no further questions about this technical correction. And that is cleaning up the language, not Dave's relocation of the list. But I'll make a motion that we place an amendment to chapter thirteen ten on the next council agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pretty good. Before we conclude the Community Economic Development Committee, I think it's important to acknowledge the work that the planning commission did on the preceding items. We appreciate it, it was a great discussion. I think it's good from time to time to review where we are, where we want to go in terms of aesthetics and signage, and it's linked to economic development and the other things that make our community livable. And it's always good to have a second set of eyes on these proposals. So, kudos to, or our thanks to the planning commission. And with that, I'm gonna surrender to the president.
All right, let's move on to finance and property. Stephanie?
Okay, this is just how our finance director cleans up the accounts at the end of the year, and it really is self-explanatory as it states. So she just insists to move it forward, it doesn't need to be on a minute, any emergency, we'll just be reading it three times.
Say again, that will be what?
Reading it three times. So if no questions, I move, we'll move to the agenda for the next time.
Revolt will second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.
Hey, Gerald, what are your thoughts on the...
All right.
Signs like, if you want a job, you know what I mean? Like, oh yeah, a work from home, full, and then it'll be a big, three-word reference, like work from home, or how to be a contractor, or stuff like that, it looks like everywhere. I wonder how legit those are.
You know, probably like, which hope is that? I don't have any suggestions, but now or no, on those, we have some signs to know that that might be a potential utility attraction.
So if they're right, we... Right, or...
But you gotta ask the property, see if they're just... So, I'm John, advertising...
I mean, it's always been before.
Or, or truck driving jobs, twenty dollars an hour, on the phone, you know? And then I have the word... Who the hell worked that?
You know, one of the points that...
Physically, lay out...
Can you read all this?
Where are you at? Right now, you'd be hoping. You need all these lines? Like, drawing signs all night long, all through the city?
This is... I tried to...
Look who's showing up.
And can make sure that ordinance is... Not like designed with large... But also hangs together, and see if it magically... I guess...
Yeah, but it seems to get hard to, we just, it matters a couple minutes, and so...
So, this was...
So that's the separate from the immediate situation.
Today is chapter of long battle, of long struggle, but it's gonna take us...
Safe built with the life. So, actually, they're safely... Building signs, building ships, just... And then... And we have... What is... Nearly consistent, and in a larger universe.
So I can't, I can't advertise a fraud law reserve, right? I can't have the first one in the right place, dude, right? Right, exactly. So this is a little water, I mean, this is... I don't tell it that loud.
Bye.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm...
Figuratively speaking, you've already rolled one, too.
Or, or... Or, I hate...
No, you could have, you could do a freaking museum, Westwood, what kind of sign is it? You could put it up on January ninth, twenty-one. You know, I mean...
Well, what about, what about your landlord?
They're fine, outstanding, man.
You can't have fifty? Because it's not considered ideological. Promoting, you're promoting a better art, huh?
Well, unfortunately, you want to do that, you're listening to... But, so, you know, I mean, if this goes back to the... Try to balance the... Right? With... A series of four links that permits... So, it's just, you're walking this line. And we think, this is very...
Now, you're, now you're, now you're hearing most of it, though, but you kept a couple things, but...
We did, but, but again, in this... You could have an adult conversation.
You know what I mean, right, no one got...
Let's talk about this, what's... We'll get to security with one side. I don't care about this, I don't care about it, let's stick it in.
And I'm tired, I'm tired of great... Fuck, you don't know what's like... You don't wanna know that, it's an object, it's... I think you're in the first level, you see, I always...
I would get, I have a senior luxury ideas, okay? You gotta do this, you wanna do that. There's many questions that...
So you can have a man on sign on utility, that's... So I can't put, I can't talk to him with a sign, which stands for against the utility, right? It's on their yard, it's on their utility.
My wife's not even close right away, but he's your yard.
Because that's what's like.
And if you want fifty of the system.
But it looks really bad. You don't. Everybody likes that handy, but on your yard, that's fine, I can't put it on the pole right away.
And so she talks versus. Forty years, and yet it's, is my children, they support our businesses. I mean, we were talking about, for example, the electronics. So your business is a little dark, it's electrical, you're like. That marketing message is dead. That's, we wanna be able to.
There's a pressure on business and rockets all the time. Every entity to market, you gotta get tons of emails, like, everyone wants my attention, everyone wants my eyes to be. And the signs are another thing, like, I remember a few years ago, like, I think it was like fifteen years, something like that. About, like, it would be truck, like, when you get around the sign, it just parks the truck and.